The Chair is going to step down and invite Mr.
Vice Chair to proceed with the meeting.
Our second item on today's agenda is the approval of minutes. First one is executive session of October 18, 2010. A motion to approve the minutes. Question for Mr. Winslow.
Just at the end of the first page of the minutes, there seemed to be a sentence that you just cut off. It didn't make sense. It's just discussion followed on the above including budget impacts on this year's next potential lays and it prepared for questions except health plan. The result would be $600. It didn't make any sense. I don't know what could be.
If I could offer the probably the last two words, it should be a net loss. And that would complete that statement, I think.
Yeah, yeah. All right. That was my only comment.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
So with that in mind, do we have a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Avino, seconded by Mr. Weldy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next approval of minutes is regular session of October 18, 2010. Any questions on the minutes? A motion to approve is made by Mr. Weldy, seconded by Mr. Avino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Those minutes have been passed. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone from the audience is welcome to come up to make a comment regarding anything on our agenda. If you do, please state your name and your address here in the moment.
I can remember if you see this one. I'm not sure if I can understand this. It's a little bit of a time.
No, it is.
A couple of months ago, there was some of the math books that were fully ordered back into town. And I noticed literally what they had gotten. I don't want to change the meeting. I believe it was in December of October. I was told that it was a control issue and that it would be on the right way. I was told recently that as of October 7th, the money was just appropriated at that point in time. We're now into November. We're in the second, I believe, the second semester of the year. And the kids still don't have the appropriate books. The books they have are falling apart, missing pages. It's causing the teachers to make copies of the pages they need, which is using up other resources, the school paper, the ink, the toner of the copy machines. And I just don't understand while school started in August, when these books should have been here in August, it's now November 8th going to November 9th, and they're not here yet. I don't understand that it took if how it went down to October 27th to appropriate the funds when I was told by people on the panel before me, as well as the city council, that these that this was a control issue, had to be taken care of and the books are ordered back in September or October, the last time I was here. And they're not there yet. And I find that's a problem with somebody not either doing their job and misleading people. The parents, the teachers, and the students have a right to know why these books aren't there when we're already into the second semester of the year, November. Thanksgiving break is in two weeks, and then we go into Christmas break in December. And the books aren't here in mid-November. It's just not appropriate. It's just wrong. And I think something and an explanation needs to be told to people as to whose job it was to order these books before the school year started back in September and why they're not here yet. And I just want to know why. And I think the teachers want to know why. And when my son brings home a book that's falling apart, it's just it's just wrong. And whether the money was appropriated in October, even if it was appropriated October 27th, it's now November 8th. That's 11 days ago. It doesn't take that long to put an order in. The books need to be here for the students, for the teachers, and for the city. And I just don't understand why they're not here yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else ready to come to the podium for public comment, which is still open? In not seeing that, that section of the meeting is closed. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's reports. First item under that would be student accomplishments. Mr. Smith.
Okay. Thank you very much. Also, I want to let folks in the audience know, as soon as I'm finished with the accomplishments and move into the budget, I'll give you an update on the math books. In terms of accomplishments, I'm going to make note of some accomplishments of students as well as staff members. First of all, I'd like to start out with a note about Malden High School. Malden High hosted its second annual Get Ahead Day last week. Approximately 400 grade nine students visited colleges in the Boston area, including Boston College, Emerson, Fisher, Harvard, Merrimack, Tufts, and University of Mass Lowell. And for many of the students, this was the very first time they'd ever set foot on a college campus. So the fact that every single one of them got out of the building and onto a campus that day, I think was a great accomplishment. In addition, all of our 537 sophomores took the PSATs on that day, which really gives the sophomores, and actually our juniors also, a big leg up on getting additional college board information that's released when those scores are released in January and February. So that was an additional big accomplishment. And the high school also, at the same time, hosted a mini-college fair for the class of 2011. And over 46 universities, colleges, technical schools, and gap year programs were represented in the high school. So on that particular day, every student in the high school had a very, very intensive college preparation day. And I just want to give my congratulations to Manjula Karamchidi, Director of Guidance for Staff, Mr. Brown, the Principal, for a terrific accomplishment. That's a very difficult thing to pull off. Secondly, I want to give you give everybody here some idea of all of the unbelievable parent education activities that are taking place throughout the district under the leadership of Margaret Adams, the Director of Literacy and Language Acquisition, working in collaboration with Pat Fish. Right now, we have 130 parents and guardians involved in adult ESL classes, which are offered in three different school locations during the school day. And the parents represent all of the schools, as well as all of the linguistic diversity present in Malden. That's 130 parents and guardians that we are educating largely through above and beyond efforts on the part of Margaret and her staff. In addition, from December through June, parents will have access to monthly family literacy activities led by our K-8 literacy coaches. This too is above and beyond the call of duty for them. And Title I is sponsoring an evening Parents Academy, a series of Parents Academy workshops, which will be held at each of the K-8 schools in the morning as well as in the evening. I think it's important to note all of this additional work that the staff is doing, not only in service to the kids but to their parents, and in this case particularly those parents who are learning English for the first time. And the final accomplishment, which is incredibly significant to me, this is the third sportsmanship award that will have been awarded to Malden High in the last year. Malden High School was awarded the District B Sportsmanship Award among all District B schools in the Commonwealth for the 2009-2010 school year. And the sportsmanship award will be awarded at the 17th Annual MIAA Sportsmanship Summit at Gillette Stadium on November 19th. So congratulations are in order to all the coaches and Athletic Director Dan Keefe. I think it's great that we're winning on the playing field in our competitions with other teams, but I think this sportsmanship award says a whole lot more about about the athletes that come out of Malden High School. So any questions about any of those accomplishments? If not, I will turn off my phone. And move on to a budget report. First of all, I'll since folks here are probably waiting just to hear about the math books, I'll report first on the math books as well as on the computers that folks have been waiting for. All of the math books have now been ordered. And those have not arrived, should arrive over the course of the next week or two. The vendor has been given a purchase order and is releasing those math books. In terms of the reason why it took this long, first of all, I want to make note that the requisitions were first submitted last May for those books. The school department has control only so far as the requisitions go. The purchase orders can be sent to the vendors only after the money has been released. The purchase orders were released as quickly as we could as as they could possibly be shot out the door once those monies were released. But as a result of, I think, the holdover concerns that most folks are familiar with and the and the amount of holdover money that was left in abeyance and could not be tapped into until just recently, some of those purchase orders didn't go out. They are all out now, and the math books are either here or the vendor has confirmed that that they are shipping them shortly. In terms of the computers, I think folks have known that we've had a concern about getting new computers into Forestale and the Linden School. The bond that was issued to pay for those computers, we have received the funds and the Forestale and the Linden School computers are being purchased. We contacted Micronet, and we are just arranging with Micronet the installation of those computers. We hopefully they are going to get them in by the holiday or before the holiday break, certainly during the holiday break. It is largely up to their availability to do the installations. I do need to make note that the bond actually fell short of paying for all of the computers to the tune of $64,262. On the school side, we were put in a position where we are going to use most of the remaining stabilization funds, ARRA funds, to pay for the balance of those computers. But that will take place. It's already been arranged. We have the requisitions. The purchase order will be released to Micronet, and Micronet will install hopefully, as I said, before the winter break, but certainly during the winter break at the latest. So Forestale and Linden will have the computers that we have all been anxiously awaiting. Any questions about the computers or math books? Not, I'll move on to the regular budget presentation.
Superintendent Smith, as far as the computers go, I was going to ask, but you clarified. You don't mean the Thanksgiving break. You mean the winter, the December holiday.
No, I mean the December holiday.
And there's nothing that we can do to expedite the Forestale specifically in getting those computers there before maybe the Linden, who does have at least a computer?
Yeah, well, I'm hoping I haven't talked personally to Micronet. I know that the Mr. Famdui was talking to them today, and they're they're going to letting them know that the money is available. They're going to get back to him over the next day or two. They know that we want the computers as quickly as possible. I'm just trying to set an outside window.
So there's a possibility.
There's absolutely a possibility if Micronet can come in.
All right. Thank you very much.
Our technicians are willing to work in the evening, weekends, or whatever, if Micronet can come in and be of assistance. Okay. I'd like to bring your attention to the pie chart, the expenditure statement that you receive each each month. And this month, I'd like to walk through it in a little bit more detail than I have in the past, because I think it's important that you understand exactly where we are, what the status of the district is now. As you look at the pie chart, as always, the original approved budget is up in the left-hand corner, $48,649,471. You notice in the next column, the holdover is down a little over $115,000 after it was settled last month that the the final statements on the holdover funds. So it's down from $1,765,000 to $1,650,000. The budget adjustments are the $150,000 that were reduced from our budget from the meal tax. I think folks are familiar with that. That happened last summer. So the revised budget is $46,618,925. You'll see the expenditures to date and the encumbrances, which give us a remaining budget of $31,367,523, which is a little bit over 67% of the budget remains. As you look at the available budget down in the right-hand corner, you'll see our projected payroll expenditures are about 30 and one-half million. Utilities we are projecting, which are as of yet unencumbered, at $952,994. Tuisines, which are unencumbered, these would be special education tuitions, we're projecting at $678,070. Homeless transportation, which is as of yet unencumbered, we're projecting at $194,854 for a net balance of actually a deficit of $1,6298. Now, that deficit is balanced a bit by we have received a an escrow check from Shore Collaborative, the special education collaborative, in the amount of $150,000. And our estimated reimbursement for circuit breaker is $467,924. At that, we are still currently projecting a deficit for the school year of $388,374. Now, when the budget was passed, everyone will recall that we were quite aware that we were going to have utilities concerns because there was $600,000 that moved into a revenue reserve account and that we would tap into those funds as soon as we were in imminent need of having those funds. The current projected deficit does not reach that $600,000 figure, but we also know that we do not have immediate control over that $600,000 figure and that the mayor's office does have control over that and will use that money in response to our needs, but also possibly in response to other other departmental needs of other departments. I just want to make the statement tonight that the intent when that money was set aside was to set aside $600,000 for the school department. And nothing other than a placeholder when we are in need, whether it be for $388,374 or more up to that $600,000 amount. I hope that everybody will circle the wagons and make sure that we get access to that $600,000. That's it for my budget report for this evening.
Any questions for the superintendent on the budget report? We'll start to the right, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually had a question about the Shore, the escrow check. Is that something that automatic? Because I usually don't see that on the budgets.
No, we have had funds in escrow at Shore for a number of years. We're tapping into those because of our high need is really.
Absolutely. I know that there's an account. Does this $150,000 deplete that account?
No, it does not. It does not. Do you know offhand the balance?
Okay. And so we requested the $150,000 already to offset what we have.
That's what we did. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Winslow.
Yeah. A couple of questions related to utilities and transportation. The homeless transportation cost, is that something that is already in our existing transportation contractor? Do is that how is that how is that set and charged to the community right now? I mean, is that Malden Transportation the general contractor?
I'm going to let Ms. Oliver speak to that more directly.
With homeless transportation, it's a little unique in that we have families coming in and out of the community. And we cost share with other communities if they're coming from a different district than the two districts will get together, and they'll agree upon a contractor, which is usually a list that we have on hand of vendors that we've used in the past to get the best rate. And so once that's agreed upon, then that vendor is called upon. And it may be that it could be just for an immediate need that one day, half a day, could be for another week, couple of weeks.
Now, where does that rate sheet come from? Is that something that's done on a regional basis? Does it come out once a month? I mean, how do those rates get there? Who develops that rate sheet?
Normally, at the beginning of the fiscal year, the rates are agreed upon with the vendor. It usually follows suit from the previous year. And you basically try to pound them down as low as you can get them.
So this is there's not a risk here that in the middle of fiscal year, I mean, gas prices are going up, that these rates aren't necessarily going to go up for in the interim period then?
They're holding pretty true to the rate once they set it at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay. And then in terms of the utilities unencumbered projected, is that still the basic? If you haven't gone back and looked at it, your assumptions on utility rates, then that's just basically what started out the year at. You haven't?
We've encumbered utilities right now, our electricity, gas. And with electricity, we have delivery and supply, and the city negotiates that contract. And they have changed that over this past fiscal year to two companies. And one of the companies now has a billing issue so that we're not receiving those invoices. So I don't know what those monthly charges are right now. So I have to go based upon what I projected out from the previous year and the year prior. And so that's what I'm estimating with a percentage increase. I also have to take into consideration that the usage last year was down over the months that we had some of the electricity cutoff or the quadrants of the high school construction. So, you know, there's a few things that I have to take into consideration.
So right now, it's hard to judge whether the the rates we're being charged are higher than you projected or not. And then there might there's some costs you've already added in because of the high schools more more if it's open then.
That's right.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Great.
Any other questions while Ms. Oliver is at the podium? Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Any other questions for the superintendent before we go to school improvement plans? Thank you.
Okay. On school improvement plans, it's really just a point of information. As in the past, each of our principals will present their school improvement plan for discussion to the school committee. The first plans will be submitted in advance of our December 13th meeting, and both BB and Ferryway Schools will present on the 13th. You have the full schedule for the remainder of the year. Next point, are there any questions about that? Okay. Bullying and prevention intervention plan, just wanted to bring you up to date on that. As you know, we have the plan must be submitted to the DESC by December 31st. And to date, we have provided the mandated online training in civil rights and educational policies and laws to all of the staff. We have included the Malden Public Schools bullying policy in the 2010-11 Parent and Student Handbooks for all schools. It's also available online. We've put into practice a new bullying prevention and intervention incident reporting form and process that is modeled on a process that was sent to us by the Department of Education. Four guidance counselors have been trained on the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center curriculum on bullying, and they are available to the schools and will conduct staff development in the district on bullying. And the Great Body Shop, which is a health and well-being curriculum, has been implemented in all of the schools in grades K to 8, and it includes a component on bullying, a component on harassment, and a component on social and emotional issues. So that's some of the work that's been done to date. Most immediately, what we're looking at are the K-8 guidance counselors completing their training so that they can provide additional training on the Steps to Success program, which is an anti-bullying prevention program, which will be in grades five through eight. And the program will be implemented and will include additional training of other staff in the schools, which will be provided by the counselors. We're in the process of creating a needs assessment tool, which we will distribute so that we can get an update on current programming, policies, and data that can be considered by the committee, which will be involved in putting the final anti-bullying program together. And then the Committee of Stakeholders has been identified to review and expand the district's current bullying prevention policy into the full anti-bullying and harassment plan, which will submit again in December, by December 31st, to the DESC. Assistant Superintendent Casabian, Nancy Casabian, is chairing that committee. And if anybody has any questions, I'd like to open the floor for those right now.
Any questions for the superintendent, I believe? I will start with Mr. Weldy.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. When we submitted the Malden Public Schools bullying prevention policy back at the end of the last school year, we submitted it with a list of programmatic suggestions. And this is a it's great, a lot of the stuff that's been done so far. But I just wanted to ask, because there are two things that are not recorded on this list that were probably some of the most important and easiest to implement suggestions. And one was the assistant principals. And this was a suggestion that the BB assistant principal, Rich Bransfield, came up with. The assistant principals would visit the homerooms of every student, grades five through eight, within the first two weeks of school to inform students of the actual policy and let them know that it existed and talk about the verbiage of it. And I was looking to see if that had been done, as well as to dedicate one of the early release professional development days within the first two months of school to actually training teachers for to this bullying prevention policy, not necessarily kind of giving it to them online, but having the assistant principals talk them through it during an early release PD day. So I just wanted to check on the status of both of those.
Okay. The first one, did you want to report on that? I was going to say, I'm not sure whether they went to every individual classroom, but I know the assistant principals in each of the schools did conduct some, you know, kind of bullying campaign, if you will, or policy campaign with with the kids. I don't know whether, again, it was done classroom by classroom. Do you have any more information on the specifics?
I can't say for sure that that happened, Mr. Weldy, but we will look into that. I have an assistant principals' meeting next week. And I think they were waiting for some clear directives as well. As we know, our guidance counselors are being trained right now in the train-the-trainer model, and they were looking for more specific directions. As a matter of fact, within the next two weeks, we are sending an addendum to the Student-Parent Handbook for all staff and students to look at, which clearly identifies the definitions. And it actually takes our policy a step further, and that's going out as a sign-off addendum to all parents. And I think that's a good where I know Mr. Bransfield is using it tomorrow to at a parent meeting to sort of to further the conversation. Your second question, we are going to devote an early release day, again, looking for more specific guidelines after the first of the year towards staff development, which will be led by our trained guidance counselors on specific curriculum. We have access to, in addition to the Great Body Shop, we will have access to a K to 5 curriculum as well as a 5 to 8. And also, our Director of Guidance, Manjula Karamchidi, will be looking at the high school as well. So there are a lot of things in progress. And I have to say, Mr. Weldy is going to be meeting with me and has reconvened the committee. So we will be meeting next week on looking at the components of the plan, which are very, very specific, very there's a not there's a lot to be done, but there's a lot we have done towards the completion of this plan. And we'll be meeting next week for the first time. There will be an opportunity for public comment once the plan has been developed. And, you know, we look forward to also school committee approval following that prior to our submission of this report to the Department of Education.
That's perfect. Yeah, my biggest concern was really the idea of making sure that the students themselves were aware of the policy and were sort of given that that heads up by their their administrators. And if if some communication had been made, be it classroom to classroom in an assembly by the assistant principals or principals or teachers to the students, and that's a good step.
I think in isolation to curriculum, it would it needs to be in tandem with the curriculum being developed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. I just really had a question about the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction and then the Great Body Shop, and then we have the Steps to Success. Is there a reason why we're using like three sort of different kinds of curriculums? Is one just more, you know, age-appropriate? Because, you know, obviously, the four guidance counselors, as I mentioned, that Manjula will be working on the high school, so I assume that the four guidance counselors are from the K-8.
Yes, they are, yes, they are.
And then we'll, well, then we'll have them, what's the difference between sort of the success?
I think the K to 5 curriculum, for example, that is available to us from the Mass Aggression and Reduction Center is very prescribed. It's more detailed than the Great Body Shop, which is certainly a comprehensive curriculum for the total social, emotional, and healthy well-being of our students. So as far as the curriculum available, we're going to look at both, see where they overlap. And once the trainers are trained, it will train staff. It's a step-down process. And we will look at the overlaps and see where one can complement or add to the other.
Okay.
Yeah, also, I just want to add, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, also, their training is of guidance counselors to train adults. You know, so the curriculum is more than just a curriculum that is delivered to students. It's a curriculum that is, will be an integral part of the in-service work that we do. And then the Steps to Success is, again, more a broader program that the counselors will be engaged in. It is not a day-to-day curriculum like the Great Body Shop is. So there is a little bit of difference between them.
Okay, and then, so the Great Body Shop now, that's being kind of implemented by the PE?
By both PE and Health. Yeah, depending upon the configuration in each school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Ayavino.
Superintendent Smith, as I look over the issue here on the bullying and bullying prevention, I noticed that there's a heavy emphasis on professional development. Do you anticipate that the money that's been budgeted thus far for professional development will be enough for this training as well?
Yes, I'm very confident that we'll be fine on that account. Also, I know that the DESC is going to be releasing some additional funds in the future. Whether we need to tap into those, I don't know. But I feel secure, we're in good shape right now.
All right, also, is it possible for us to get just a blank copy of what that bullying incident report form looks like?
Sure.
And finally, are you aware, or is anybody aware of any grants that may be available through, from the Department of Justice through perhaps District Attorney Leonie's office, or Sheriff DePaolo's office, or Martha Coakley's office, the Attorney General, that might, we might be able to tap into for additional resources?
No, actually, most of those funds have dried up. I mean, we've been looking for those, you know, we used to have the student-to-student program in the high school that was funded by that. Those funds are very, very hard to find. I know of none right now that are available to us to apply.
Thank you.
Any further questions while Ms. Casabian is standing there? Thank you, Ms. Casabian. Next item, we'll talk about math intervention.
I have two budget items, two staffing requests to make tonight. The first one has to do with a mathematics teacher at Salemwood School to provide intervention services for our lowest-performing students. What has happened at Salemwood this year is that we started the school year with the mathematics teachers teaching not only the regular education students, but also our SEI students. We were not able to find a qualified SEI math teacher to teach those students. In addition to that, actually, the math teachers somewhat welcomed the role and took on the cause of educating the SEI kids. At the same time, we weren't at full enrollment at that point. Now we are at full enrollment. The math teachers at Salemwood have approximately 25 additional students above and beyond the other teachers, both at Salemwood and other teachers throughout the district. And in addition to that, those 25 additional students have additional needs as represented by the students who are dual-language. What I'm requesting is the opportunity to hire a math teacher to relieve some of those, the stress of those numbers. But more importantly, to respond to the needs of the students. We need to have parity across the district. But we also have, I would say, from anywhere from 18 to 25 students in each of the grade levels, 5 through 8, who frankly are falling between the cracks. And we need to, we need, their needs to be taken care of. We need to bring the parity in terms of the staffing at Salemwood to, which is necessary to be able to provide the sufficient services to those kids. So I'm hoping that we are, we would be able to hire one math teacher for Salemwood. That would be funded by Title I ARR funds, so there would be no impact on the city budget. And it would be a position that would be funded through June 30th of this school year. So I would ask for your support.
Any questions on this position? Mr. Kasucci.
I think that there are, we need more quantitative data on the 5 through 8 grades test scores at the Salemwood. It would also be helpful to have the grades test scores at Salemwood, grades 1 through 4. Malden has a large turnover of very diverse students who speak a number of languages. And in order for a solid improvement to be made, especially on test scores, the children need consistency and need to be able to read the math problems in English. Per the report, it is stated that each Salemwood teacher has 25 more students than other schools. Is it possible to expand a little more on that? And how many students are in the math class at the Salemwood? And how many students are in BB, Forestale, Ferryway, Linden? Have there ever been a math intervention teacher at the Salemwood? And if there was, was it effective? And what will the qualifications for this math teacher be? Will this person be able to speak all the languages to address the students' needs? How much will the math intervention teacher be paid? I would also like the opportunity to talk to the Salemwood math teachers for further understanding the great need and the difficulties encountered this basis. I don't think there is enough information to justify the need for a new teacher at one of these, at this school during the time of such a financial hardship. And if we do decide to hire a math intervention teacher, how will this salary be funded next year and the years thereafter? And if it's one-time funding, who will pay for this person's unemployment insurance? And what will that cost be to the city?
A lot of questions. Let me, first of all, just start out by saying that this is to bring equity at Salemwood. Salemwood, in the math department alone, has assumed a heavier load of students right from the beginning of the school year because we were not able to fill the SEI math position with a qualified teacher. They accepted that, that additional burden, regardless of scores or what have you. Though I might add that our scores at Salemwood in both the lower school as well as the upper school are lower than they are in the other, in the other schools in the district. I think that a piece of that also has to do with the rapidly changing population of the Salemwood school over the course of the last few years, particularly as we decided to have our entire SEI program in that building. At this point in time, we are not looking for a math teacher to work just with SEI students. Actually, many of those students are thriving as they are instructed by the regular education mathematics teachers in the building. But we have 18 to 25 students in each grade level who tend to be both regular education students. There are some SEI students, and there are some students who have individual education plans, who are students with disabilities, who are falling through the cracks in terms of their mathematics performance. As I said before, it's already a school that has additional challenges because it has assumed the burden of not having that teacher. That teacher would be built into the budget next year. We would not continue to have an inequity of mathematics teachers in that building. But, but there would be a consequent loss of some funds someplace else. We don't know what that budget, what the budget figures are going to be right now. But we do know that there is an immediate need on the part of those students. If we allow them to not get into the classrooms where we can have a very particular intervention curriculum that's focused on numeracy and on fluency and whole numbers, fractions, and preparation for algebra, next week, these kids will fall further behind. The following week, they will fall further behind. And at the end of the year, they will be in an untenable position. And if we don't get that teacher in there, it is my professional opinion that we are basically saying to these kids, we are comfortable with the probability that you will fail mathematics this year. I don't want that situation to exist.
Any other questions, Mr. Kasucci, a follow-up on that?
I guess we, let's see, and how much will the teacher be paid?
Well, first of all, the qualification of the teacher would be the same as any other teacher in the Malden Public Schools. They would need to be a certified mathematics teacher. We have put on the posting, should we receive permission to move forward, that we are looking for also someone who has experience working with highly-challenged students in the area of mathematics. The salary would be the same as any teacher on the salary scale. If we hired a teacher who had three years of experience, they would come in and receive a salary commensurate with where they would fall on the scale with three years of experience, or two years, or five years, what have you. It is really a mathematics teacher, first. I mean, to call it a mathematics intervention teacher, it's really a mathematics teacher who is working with our lowest-performing kids.
So we're not looking at someone that would be able to speak more languages than?
No, we are not. As a matter of fact, even in the SEI program, they do not speak multiple languages. The kids are taught in English. And, and, and so there are no particular language requirements there, or in this position.
Any other questions, Mr. Kasucci? Thank you. Mr. Winslow, did you have your?
Yeah, no, I would like to speak in favor of hiring this teacher. I know that there has been a lag in the, you know, a slight decrease in the math scores at the Salemwood, and that, we saw that in the MCAS results. And I think that was really as the result of some of the decision to put more of the SEI students in the Salemwood. And I think it's important that we maintain equity and the commitment that that school's carrying that burden. And we need to make sure that they have the resources that they need to educate the students. And the students shouldn't wait. And if we feel we have the budget now and for next year, I think we need to do this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Mr. Welldie, and then we'll get to Mr. Furr.
I'd also like to speak in favor of this. I think the changing population at Salemwood isn't new news to us, nor is this specific issue, because we've heard about this before. I think the validity of the need for this position has been proven. And there's unison in the request, not just from the superintendent, but from the school administration and Ms. Keenan. This is a request that everyone seems to think is a valid request. So I would urge my colleagues to approve this and not, you know, take the advantage of, you know, we have the opportunity to give them, to give those students at Salemwood a little bit more help where they really need it. So I don't think that the validity of the request should really be questioned right now.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Staying on the left, Mr. Furr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, how many, how many students would this teacher be responsible for?
From grades 5 through 8, they would be responsible for about, it would be, let's see, about 96 students?
96, would that be over like five different classes?
It'd be over five, actually, it's about 90 students over five classes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furr. On my right, Ms. Crowe.
I actually am in support of this. I really am glad that we're kind of looking to make sure that people aren't falling through the cracks. And I think sometimes that it's just too easy for that to happen. I just had a question. If we had at the beginning of the year a difficulty finding an SEI math teacher, what is the probability of sort of the middle of the year that we're going to buy a student that's qualified to really?
Well, I think actually, we will not try to find an SEI math teacher, nor will we do that next year. I mean, we found that it's actually, we believe, more effective the way it has come to pass that the SEI kids have been integrated into the regular classroom. And it's a mix of kids with mixed profiles who are at need. Some of them are SEI, but some of them are also regular ed, and some are kids with disabilities. And so what we need is a good, solid math teacher.
And so do we have, you know, do you have avenues of where you would be looking for that? Again, at the middle of the year?
Yeah, actually, we have a candidate.
So there's a lot of math teachers out there, but?
We do have a candidate.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Other questions? We will need a motion for this, and I heard a motion from Mr. Welldie. A motion is made by Mr. Welldie to approve the superintendent's request for a math intervention teacher at Salemwood School. Motion made by Mr. Welldie, seconded by Mr. Winslow. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Ronzio?
Kasucci? Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Ayavino?
Yes.
Mr. Otrino?
Yes.
Mr. Welldie?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you. Next item, superintendent?
Okay, my final item is, again, another personnel request. I'm requesting $16,000 to pay for a paraprofessional for the Forestale School. That paraprofessional is in the school to work primarily among the special education classes of our most severely disabled students. We have found that we have a safety concern at Forestale. We have six pairs who are assigned to work with students, some of whom need one-to-one support. And frankly, some of those pairs have been out at different moments during the school year due to injuries, suffered from working with, again, some of these, some of the kids. And we cannot afford to not have a full complement of paraprofessionals available in that program. So I'm hoping to hire one more paraprofessional. At the same time, I need to add that some of those students are, their IEPs call for one-to-one pairs. If that para is not there providing service on any particular day, we are vulnerable to a suit that could be brought upon us by the parent, which could ultimately lead to a student being placed out of district. I think it would be penny-wise and pound-foolish, as the saying goes, if we don't make this investment in the 16, of $16,000 in this paraprofessional. And that $16,000 is to pay for the balance of the school year.
Questions for the superintendent, Mr. Winslow?
My one question is just related, is it possible to have this position set up as a substitute? I mean, you're thinking this is going to be some, an additional person. You'll have seven people, seven pairs instead of six, just to explain that, thinking that?
Yeah, there are two things. First of all, if that, if that paraprofessional, and we talked about this just this last week, to date, there has been a need for that para on a daily basis. Should there be an individual day where that para is not necessarily needed in that position, but they are needed as a substitute teacher in the building? Because we are also frankly having a great deal of problems across the district, having sufficient number of substitutes. Then in fact, we've talked about ways to allow that para to be available, to be a substitute on that day, but also to receive substitute pay for that particular day.
Call set, Mr. Winslow?
Well, I guess my, I guess my question on that is if they're receiving substitute pay on that day, does that mean they don't get the para pay on that day? Is that?
That's right, it would be at a per diem.
Okay, on my, on my right, Mr. Ayavino.
I will speak in support of this position. It's important that we're mindful of the fiscal situation. We're all familiar with it. But we have to balance that situation with the fact that should something occur, as the superintendent said, we would be out of compliance. And to be out of compliance is going to end up, would end up costing the city some serious... And to be out of compliance is going to end up, would end up costing the city some serious money. So I think that the investment that the superintendent is making here is absolutely wise and absolutely valid, and I for one will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. Mr. Duffy?
I too am in support of this, but I would like to just ask, have we entirely ensured that all policies and procedures are being followed? I mean, to be injured in the course of duty like this, troubling, it happens, but are we ensure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that this is not happening as regularly as it could be?
We are. I, you know, it, it has come to the point that we almost have an extra central special ed staff person located at Forestale, you know, providing support on an ongoing basis. We are absolutely bending over backwards and, you know, to make sure that all of the needs are of, of both the kids and the staff are being properly attended to on a daily basis.
Okay.
All right, well, like, again, I am in support of this.
Any last comments or questions? We will need to make a motion, a motion made by Mr. Iavino to approve a paraprofessional at the Forestale School. And at the cost to be determined by the superintendent. And we need a second, seconded by Mr. Weldy. Ms. Ronzio, would you call the roll on this, please?
Mr. Katsuki?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Royal?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Dr. Altrenow?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, superintendent. Fifth item on the agenda is deliberations. The first item on the deliberations is subcommittee updates. Any subcommittee updates at this point? Mr. Weldy?
I just have two quick things. First, in sort of building off of the great work that Assistant Superintendent Casabian and Superintendent Smith has done with the bullying prevention policy, the bullying prevention subcommittee will be reconvening and will be having a meeting on the 23rd of November at 6 o'clock PM in the superintendent's office, which is the first floor of City Hall. The purpose is to revise and expand the current bullying prevention policy into the full anti-bullying and harassment plan that we'll be submitting to the DESE. So again, we'll be meeting hopefully just once or twice, but the first meeting will be on the 23rd of November here at 6 o'clock. And Assistant Superintendent Casabian will be joining us to present a lot of what they have done so far. The only other thing I wanted to share with my colleagues is I place in front of you all a, just a, just a little FYI. I was pleased and honored to take a few votes. I was representing Malden as the delegate at the MASCE yearly conference last week. And every year, the MASCE votes on a few resolutions to send to the legislature, and I just gave you a, a brief synopsis. There were seven resolutions that the MASCE considered this year. A couple of them are very interesting, like number six, mid-year retirements. MASCE collectively voted to, to not support the idea of getting rid of mid-year retirements for educators. One that's very interesting is Resolution 1, which we also cosponsored. We voted on a couple months back that Mr. Altrenow brought forward, which is the Special Education Circuit Breaker Extension. And that did pass, so that will be going to the legislature. And the only other very interesting one that I found was Resolution 4, which was the Charter School Funding Formula. This was a resolution brought up by a colleague of ours in Everett. He got up and he spoke very eloquently about the woes that they're having with the charter school funding formula, because they have a charter school in their district. It took me a little while to realize that the charter school that he was talking about was in fact a charter school that we also share. And when a colleague of ours from Medford also got up and spoke in favor of this, I too joined them, got up and spoke in favor of this, and it passed with a resounding yes. So the MASCE will be resolving to go file legislation that will change the charter school funding formula. So that was a, a very nice thing to stand with Medford and Everett to be able to do. The only other vote that I was very proud of is I was able to vote yes for our own Ward II member Steve Altrenow, who just became the secretary treasurer on the MASCE exec board. So we are very well represented, and we should be proud of that on the state level. So thank you very much for the honor of sending me, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Any other subcommittee updates? Mr. Winslow?
Just, no, the policy subcommittee, I'm, I'll be scheduling a meeting for December 13th, which will be before our next school committee meeting. And I did, I, I spoke to Ms. Ronzio today, during the week, and she mentioned about the possibility of having some of the materials for our packets come out electronically. So I thought maybe that would be appropriate for the policy committee to discuss amongst the other things that we're discussing. So with the consent of the committee, we'll add that to our agenda as well.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Any other subcommittee updates? Not seeing any. We already, item number two under deliberations was the budget update, which the superintendent put through under superintendent's report. Ms. Crowe and I would be, will be having a budget subcommittee sometime in the next month, not only to go over the budget for this year and see if we're, we're going to have any loss or addition because of transportation, utility, special ed, but also start the budget for next year at some point. So not seeing anything else on the agenda, take time for personal privilege. Anyone like to start with personal privilege? Ms. Crowe?
Just wanted to remind people that on this coming Wednesday, the Chamber of Commerce will be having their business expo from 10 to 6 at the Senior Center. It's really is a good chance to come out and support local businesses, nonprofits, are all there with, with what they have to offer. So we hope to see everybody there, and please take time on Thursday to remember the veterans. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Duffy?
Nope.
Mr. Iavino?
Just a couple of items, actually three. The Malden Kiwanis and the Everett Kiwanis will be hosting tomorrow their annual luncheon to honor the participants of the Malden High School football team and the Everett High School football team. This is a, a luncheon that's been going on for longer than I've been, many years longer than I've been a member of the Malden Kiwanis. It is at Anthony's tomorrow at 12:15. Also, as a reminder, the Malden High School Alumni Association has planned a rededication for the newly, beautifully newly renovated Jenkins Auditorium, set for this Sunday at 2:00 PM. It's going to feature a concert. The concert will feature members of Malden High School Band, the Coral Arts Society, the Robert Love Alumni Chorus Society, Robert Winter, who is the Boston Pops pianist, a skit from Joey Voices, Joey Noon, those of us in the community who have seen his show know how good he is. It will be followed later on by a light supper refreshment. The cost of the reception is $25. The concert, however, is open to the public free of charge. So we hope everybody that would like to see the Jenkins Auditorium, this is your opportunity to do so. I also want to extend a very happy Thanksgiving a little bit early, but since this is a school committee meeting for the month of November, a happy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. On my left, Mr. Furrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to send a thank you out to Northeast Regional Vocational. I was involved in the ad book for that rededication of the Jenkins Auditorium, and we had a student from Malden that, that worked with us, myself and Barbara Tolstrop. And we, he did an excellent job on an ad book. We made, we're making some money on it. So I'd just like to again thank Northeast Regionals Vocational, graphic arts department. And one other thing, Saturday, Malden High is, are they going to be playing away at Everett High School? And Malden High is, has two wins in the GBL, and Everett has three wins. Malden has a chance if, if they can beat Everett and beat an old 0-1-8 Medford to be the champs in the GBL like, like they used to be. I don't know if it's possible, but good luck, Malden High. Thank you.
Thanks for your words of encouragement, Mr. Furrow. Mr. Katsuki?
I would like to give a shout out to Beverly McCarthy at the Newland Street Housing Authority for a wonderful, wonderful job on her Halloween party. And thank you for inviting me, and I'm looking forward to the Christmas party.
Mr. Winslow?
Well, I, I want to wish everybody an early Thanksgiving a welcome, and I also hope to see many people at the Veterans Parade coming up. I would also just want to remind people, Malden High School Drama Club is featuring Working, the drama Working by Stets Turkle, and that is the weekend of November 19th. So enjoy that. I know I always enjoy the drama productions there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Mr. Weldy?
Just a few notes, the Forestale School PTO will be hosting their next meeting Wednesday, November 17th at 6:30 PM in the Forestale School Cafeteria. So it's Wednesday, November 17th, 6:30 PM, Forestale School Cafeteria. I would like to publicly say a thank you to Irene Oliver, our budget director, for, Irene supplied me with a lot of wonderful and very elementary budget sheets to sort of go, do a budget one-on-one with a lot of the parents at the last Forestale School meeting, and they all loved it. It was very easy to read, very easy to understand, and that was a huge benefit, so thank you, Irene. And without, at risk of sounding like a, a broken record, but this, this will be the last time, but I'm very proud. The Malden High School Band actually came in first place in their finals about two weeks ago. It's the first time in recent history that Malden has taken a first place in a New England finals, and that's really a testament to a lot of the hard work that those kids do and that Matt Tavoris does. So I really want to congratulate them, and I want to thank Matt Tavoris and thank the Malden High School Band for giving us another thing on the list of things that Malden is known for around New England. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Mr. Iavino?
I would be remiss, and I apologize, when I gave the list of those who would be performing Sunday. Mr. Sean Walsh, who's a drama teacher at Malden High School, they will be performing a small episode, a small skit, a scene from one of their plays. So I apologize to Mr. Walsh and to the Drama Club for having left them off my original list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. On November, Thursday, November 18th, the YMCA will have, the Malden YMCA will be having the annual gala. They'll be recognizing some business owners and contributors. The money, the proceeds go to summer camp, kids going to summer camp, and they serve service, I think a few hundred kids during the summer. So it's a worthwhile event. If you need more information, go to maldenymca.org, and their website will have that information. Also, I want to wish Malden a lot of luck at playing Everett, but most importantly is our 107th or so game against Medford. And the turkey always tastes better when we beat Medford. And if we do lose, the superintendent dresses up as a turkey. I'm not sure if you knew that coming into the district. But some people may like that, superintendent, so. If there are no other items, Ms. Crowe?
Got one thing, actually, that we'll be having our annual parade of holiday traditions on Saturday, November 27th, stepping off at 10 o'clock in the morning from the Salemwood School and going down Salem Street into Malden Square. It's really a great time. I hope everybody gets there, and superintendent, you can dress up as a turkey then too, if you like.
Without anything else, this motion to adjourn made by Mr. Weldy, seconded by Mr. Duffy. All those in favor? All right? Happy Thanksgiving.